Now talk. I can hear you, but I don't. Anne, try it again.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, that's the problem. Where is the speaker? There's not. Oh, I wonder if, I wonder if I have an HDMI cable plugged in to this computer. And so the audio is probably going out through there rather than the speakers. So I could ask Denny if he wants to. Or can you fix it? Okay. All right. Zach is here and he's going to. Okay, speak again, Anne. As you're drinking coffee. It's up all the way. Oh, no, now it's not. Now speak, Anne.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We are better.
Okay, is it really loud? Okay, so everyone's there, are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay, so we will call the meeting to order. Sounds like everyone is in there, is there? I'm first, I'm zooming in.
Well, Anne, we are, um, Steve Rice is not here yet. And Emma is not here yet. Emma contacted me and said she'd be about fifteen minutes late. She was in another meeting that was running late, so.
Okay, but we would have enough of a quorum to get started. So I think we'll just go ahead and get started. We okay with that? Okay, so, um, let me know when they show up, please. So, um, we have the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Okay, so we have a, uh, motion from Diana. And a second from Deb.
Okay, any additions or changes to the agenda? Okay, I don't hear any. So we will approve the agenda and move on to the, to the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Denny, move.
Second. Okay, um, any changes to the minutes? Or additions or corrections? It looks good to me. All right, so all in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye. Opposed? All right, so director's report, so Kevin, you're up.
Okay.
And I can hear you really well, Kevin, but I'm not sure how well I'm going to hear, uh, hear other people unless they speak into their mic. I don't know if that makes a difference or not, but.
Okay. So, and I'm gonna put the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put the mic now closer to me so that it, for our live stream, that it, uh, goes out. So there's the minute. So I sent out a written report and, uh, for programming focused on adult services. And, um, we will have under our, our business to act on later, um, a request from Zach North. And Zach is here, so he can speak to any questions that may be asked for that. So, um, and just a report that, um, you know, with, last month I had informed you all that the school district was sending us a file of student names and, and data. And that number of accounts that we set up for middle school and high school students was one thousand six hundred eighty-one. The circulation assistant position closed on Sunday, the sixth. We had twenty-nine applicants, so there were some good applicants there. And, um, we have scheduled some initial, um, interviews. And, um, we'll see how that goes. And, you know, if we need to schedule any other interviews after those, we will. But hopefully by next week we'll be offering a position, offering the position to a candidate. Just again, a reminder that Jean Johns was retiring at the end of the month. I've submitted the paperwork to, uh, get approval to fill that position. The cataloger is in an important position, um, and then.
So Kevin, well, either one of those positions, did they change their title or anything?
Well, the circulation assistant, that was a, that was a different title previously. And we, we changed it from technical services. Technical services slash circulation to just circulation assistant. That seemed, people would seem to understand that a little easier. And the cataloger will still be the cataloger, yes.
So do we have someone that, I know Zach is the guy that knows what you, technology wise, but is that in anyone's job title? Technology?
Well, the, the, the previous, his previous position was not tech, it was tech, technical services, circulation. So, which is, uh, which is a, a traditional library term, uh, of, in, in libraries, you know, we have public service librarians who now like Zach and, and, uh, Jean Patrick, you know, they're out helping people find materials. And, and then we have technical services where those are the ones who typically are working in the back rooms doing the cataloging, processing of materials. And so, um, all of the people who are, all of us in the library help assist patrons with technology. All of the public service, um, staff, you know, from, from children's librarian, adult services librarian, the part-time staff. They all, um, we make sure they're able to help patrons, you know, with any technology issues they have.
So that really doesn't need to be anyone's other part of anyone's job title, it's kind of everyone's job.
Right. But in the circulation assistant, one of the duties listed is helping with troubleshoot technology issues.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
And then just a couple of follow-ups from last month's meeting. When we talked about Jean Johns then, Steve Rice asked a question about shelf-ready, um, materials purchasing. And I, I did some searching. I haven't yet talked to any other libraries of, if, in South Dakota, if they're using such services. But, um, you know, they all, all of, all of those services, we had somebody knocking at a door. All of those services cost and it's kind of an à la carte. If you want this sticker, uh, if you want this sticker added on, you know, you'll get charged that much. And if you've done another kind of sticker. And, um, I think until we get a new cataloger and see what the, you know, the capabilities and skill levels are of, of the, um, new cataloger, I'm gonna wait on that.
That makes sense to me.
And then another, another, another follow-up issue, I'm sorry, there's, the knocking continues.
With that, I'm sorry to interrupt, with the vendors with the à la carte services, isn't the problem also, maybe you just said that and I missed it with the knocking, but,
Yeah.
they catalog them differently?
Well, that's a possibility, you know, you have multiple vendors. Or, you know, then we, we would want them to put all of the, you know, certain stickers in the same location. And so, you know, we would also have to deal with quality control issues of making sure that each vendor's doing it the same way, so that.
That'd be a headache.
Um, yeah, and so again, waiting until the new cataloger is hired and seeing that person's, um, efficiency, um, levels and, and skill levels. So, um, I guess I would recommend it's something we could revisit in the future. And then a, a couple of things just that I didn't add to the written report. We also last month talked about me contacting Sheila Slater, uh, with the, you know, friends of the library group to see when they meet and, um, you know, the possibility of me sitting in on their meeting. I did email her last week. It was one of those things where I realized, oh, I had some things, I had some responsibilities given to me the last meeting. I better get them done. And I'm still waiting for a response, but, um, and then yesterday morning, um, I was at the department head meeting. And Stephanie Elwine informed me that, oh, I need to have a performance appraisal conducted by the library board, uh, yeah, this month. Um, before the end of the year. So, um, I'm not quite sure, I, I can find out which form that would be and, and maybe, Anne, I pass it on to you. And, uh, I, in the past, do you know who did that?
Yeah, but they're supposed to put the security on so that it stays open, how does any public show up?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't, I assumed. Steve's here.
Okay, um, I do recall that being something we talked about in the past. But I don't recall if it was a full board thing or if it was just the president and one other. That's kind of what sticks in my mind, but I also recall doing some input on it. Steve?
Yeah?
We're talking about Kevin's performance evaluation that's supposed to be done yet this month. What's the process and who does that and do you remember?
President and vice president of the council.
So the president and vice president of the whole council or this board?
On this board.
This board, okay.
Of the, of the city, not of the, not of the city council, but.
Okay, so that would be. Danny, you and I would need to get together then, and is there a certain format and?
I will, I will ask, because there are, there are two or three forms for, um, exempt. Yeah, I'm not sure which one, so I'll find out which one and I'll email it to you.
Okay, and then, um, so the deadline is the end of the month? And then do we review that with you too, Kevin, or do we review it with Stephanie or?
No, you review it with Kevin.
Yeah, you would.
With Kevin. Okay, so Danny, when this meeting is over, um, we need to talk when we could get together.
Sounds good.
Okay. And we'll try to do that yet this week maybe, Danny, and then get together with you, Kevin, maybe next week, one day.
Okay.
Next week is Christmas, yeah, but we'll try to do it as soon as possible.
Um, and then the only other thing I have to add to my report is that we had a donation of a CD. And, um, I would like to, instead of selling it on our book sale, I would like to present this CD to Mr. Steve Rice.
And he can tell us the history of the CD.
Is that him? Is that me? He plays the piano?
No.
Oh, somebody told me that must be you. Steve Rice piano on this jazz CD.
No, no. I thought, oh, we've got a, a musician on the board.
No, not me at all.
Okay, well, then give it back and we'll sell it.
Is that what it says, is Steve Rice on piano?
Yeah, he's on one of the tracks, Steve Rice piano.
Oh, there you go.
So, well, or if you wanna hear how you play, you can take it home and listen to it.
I, yeah, he has talents, I've known Steve for a long time and enjoyed playing.
Yeah.
Definitely not.
Um, and then I'll, I'll just, like, the, the monthly statistics report is there. I don't know if anybody had any questions about that, um.
So my only question on that, um, Kevin, is I appreciate all the numbers, but it's too many numbers for me. So is there any highlights that you need to tell us about?
Well.
Some trends or some?
Well, I think pro, I, I would say program, for me, the biggest interesting, the most interesting, um, tables are the programming and looking at how many, uh, you know, people are participating in children's programming and the total programming. Uh, the total programming includes children's programming and plus then adult and young adults. You know, just how many more people are participating with online programming, uh, you know, than years past. And then, you know, circulation and I, you know, for last month's meeting, I, I included the graph to make it, um, more visually, um, appealing and easier to just read total circulation. And, you know, for the year is down and we have this month yet, but.
Not that much, really.
Yeah, I mean, we expect it to be down with being closed, um, for three months, so.
Yeah, so down, but not probably three months worth, or maybe it is, I don't know.
And, and, you know, something else though that's interesting, on the, on the second page, the first, um, little box for eBooks, how many eBooks, um, have been downloaded and, you know, how many more, almost two thousand more eBooks have been downloaded, checked out this year than last year. And which again, since we are closed, but we still have eBooks and people were able to do that, use of those has, you know, continued. And has, has increased compared to years past. And the, and then I'll just. I, 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 I would guess that Steve would, would notice that that eBook number in the top table is a different number from the eBook in the bottom table. And that's because we've had two different eBook vendors, um, and then they were combined. But so that the number in the top table includes one other vendor that kind of been merged with Overdrive. So, um, those numbers next year would be the same.
All right, anybody else have any comments or questions?
Kevin, so do you see the, the eBook distribution from the national levels and all consolidate now to?
Well, I haven't.
One, one or two types, the, the public libraries or part or with or in, uh, flitter and everybody can have a little bit.
I think for public libraries, Overdrive seems to be the primary driver. It's, and I know that Sioux, Sioux Land, you know, Sioux Falls Public Library, Sioux Land Libraries, uh, you know, they are using Overdrive as well. And I've seen a post from them or something that, or was in an email discussion with their director that, you know, they don't, they don't wanna have multiple offerings, you know, for people to have to learn. Now people want, want one thing, you know, it's just easier to learn one thing. And, um, so for public libraries, Overdrive is a great thing. And we, all, all of our, our audiobook, Overdrive bought up recorded books. And so all of our online downloadable audiobooks are through Overdrive too. So it's kind of a one-stop shopping or, you know, checking out place. And they even are adding, you know, videos. And so we purchased a few, um, namely National Geographic type movies that we thought would be, you can log into your Overdrive account. And for those families who are homeschooling, you know, they could have access to some documentaries through the library, the way they would access their eBooks. So, um, you know, now, over at Dakota West Lane where I was, hi, Emma.
Hello, I apologize, anybody?
That, we, over there, we used a different vendor that had more academic passages of books, uh, which, you know, Overdrive doesn't. What I find Overdrive. Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, the Overdrive is, is geared more towards popular fiction. I mean, you can get nonfiction as well, but, um, you're not gonna get probably as many of the academic press titles. And public libraries really don't want to get too many of those.
Oh, it's a really good, easy to use system. I use it all the time and I love it, so.
So that's my report.
Okay, so, um, any further discussion about the director's report? I should accept it?
Diana?
Second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? So, moving on to the financial report. So the first is the First National Bank.
Um, yeah, so the monthly statement from the bank, um, so the balance was up over a hundred thousand. But we, uh, for December, it dropped down below that because, as you recall, we, you approved paying for the installation of the wireless control. But that came out of, that came out of, um, the December, that'll be on the December, um, statement. And then the monthly, um, expenditure report of where we are, um, and I don't, I think that there's maybe one, um, one or maybe two salary, um, accounts in the salary section. The retirement, um, is getting really darn close to, um, expense. I just learned something on Friday, um, that part-time employees, anyone who works over, who works twenty hours or more, they're all required that they then get to participate in the retirement, pro-retirement. I did not realize that. And, uh, since this summer, Ada, one of our part-time employees, had been, um, having her work thirty hours a week because, um, you know, we were down on a filling for, um, Sandy's position. And, uh, I just got a call from Stephanie on Friday saying, oh, did you know that you have part-time employees? You're having to pay and it's gonna go against your budget, so, um, but overall, the total salary budget will still be, it'll still be under. And I think everything else.
So, um, yeah, so because overall, we're gonna be okay. Remind me what those two lines are that, um, like overtime and compensated absences are, um?
The overtime, we're not, we're not supposed to have overtime, but that somehow happened before me.
Okay.
And somebody, I can't remember, it was explained to me, and I don't remember how that came about.
Okay.
But that shouldn't have been there.
I feel like we talked about it in the past and I can't remember what it was.
And then the compensated absences, that's the payout for.
Okay.
The retirees and getting their, you know, their vacation time.
And then down there on the bottom, the computer hardware, that went way over.
Well.
But we're still okay in that whole category.
Well, the computer hardware and furniture and equipment are going to go over. That's because of, um, that's over because of the grant. And I am submitting, I also just learned I needed to submit an automatic supplement request, uh, for. For the, for, yeah, for next Monday night, City Council meeting. Which then the money from the grant, which we already have, will then be appropriated into those two, you know, the cover. Yes. Yes. And so, uh, this could have, should have been done earlier and it, um. For the approval of a, of a.
Well, we submitted the payment thing to the city to have a payment, so it was considered earlier than now.
And I did not know, uh, I did not, yeah, I just found out and through conversations with Stephanie and Michelle Baskin, so. You're not sober. So that's my financial report.
Okay, um, any other discussion or, I guess, I guess we discussed it, so do I have a motion to approve? Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so on to the business items.
Okay, so.
So first one is the CARES Act, so kinda get us up to speed there.
So I'll give you an update on where we are with the grant. I, you all know that, uh, wireless, um, networks, um, extension's done and that's going well. Uh, the people counter system was installed last week. So we actually start knowing how many people come in a day and, you know, how many, which hours. And, and so that'll be really nice to, and, and, um, when I have to submit, I mean, not for 2020, but starting for 2021, when I have to submit. I mean, not for 2020, but starting for 2021, when I have to submit, um, reports to the state library for all that the library does and one of the data points is number of visitors. I'll actually be able to have an accurate number rather than a gen, number generated from adding how many people kind of did this and how many people did that, and it may not be quite accurate. So. Um, it's, it's, yep, right inside both of the exterior doors. The computer, uh, yeah. Oh, no, no. I don't know because, I mean, I mean, we still keep track of how many, well, we, in the past, they kept track of how many people went into the community room for events there. Um, and then that was one of the numbers they added for the total of how many people came to the library. But, uh, it's important to know how many people come to the library and that's one of the things we have to report. So, um.
Is there a counter on both sides?
Yes, at each door, right inside each door. And then they combine together for a total.
Gotcha. Okay. And backing up just a tiny bit, the wifi, um, that's all set up and going? And is there any way to tell how many are using it or?
Yes, I get, I can log in and, you know, see every day what the usage is and I get monthly reports from, uh. Well, Andrew, well, Andrew threw the Cisco, I mean, we use Cisco equipment for the wireless network. So he gets numbers and, and those are emailed to me every month. But if you remember back in August, I was contacted by the state library. The state library, uh, paid for the 25 system, which, uh, your wireless, they can, they pull numbers from the wireless and I, and Andrew said, yes, there's more, um, information that comes from their system than, I mean, they pull it from our wireless network, but it, it just crunches the numbers differently and more indepthly. And so I get monthly reports from that as well, as well as I can see daily numbers and so, yeah. And the numbers have, have, you know, been higher, um, since the, the wifi was extended to the, um, to the parking lot, the numbers have been higher for their usage.
Is that something we need to publicize or at least into the school?
Well, we are, we, we publicized it on our Facebook page. We've publicized it, uh, we're gonna publicize it in our next newsletter. Uh, and one thing we have to do yet is put, uh, posters up, you know, just for people when they walk into the library so that they know that there's wifi. Yeah, I mean, they know that there's wifi, but, um, you know, but it's, it's also interesting. I mean, people have found out already.
Okay.
You know, the number of cars in the parking, you know, the, the first, it was installed on a Friday. The next Monday, we had a guy with a cargo van with Nebraska license plate. He spent the entire day, I don't know, he spent the entire day in the parking lot on our, on our network, doing whatever work he had to do for his job.
And is it 24/7 or is it go off at 10?
It's, right now it's 7 to 10. The, the parking lot has signs that say no parking between actually 9:00 PM and, and 7:00 AM.
Okay.
But we're extending the wifi until 10:00 PM, uh.
Okay.
But, uh, Andrew, I don't think felt totally comfortable going much later than that with the, that sign thing. Although the, I know, and, and I talked to my pastor, you know, police chief, I mean, they don't patrol the parking lot. They don't ticket cars in the parking lot, but, uh, you know, that's to discour, the signs there to discourage people from parking there, especially in the winter, if there's snow and they need to be following, you know, they don't want.
Sure. Okay.
Has there been any check and how far the actual range goes beyond the parking lot?
I have not. I mean, I could, you know, walk around with my phone, but I know, I mean, I always park on the west side of the parking lot right next to Sandborne. And I have, when I've gotten out, I've looked at my phone and I have a big signal there. So. But I haven't walked across the street. I should to, to see if the parking lot across the street, if it picks it up. But if they are, they can't use it past 10 o'clock. And the public wifi is throttled back, you know, so, you know, if somebody wants to do a lot of watching on Netflix, you know, it's not gonna be the greatest, um, experience. Uh, so then the, the, the two public computers that we're going to replace, those have been ordered. Um, Andrew found out that the company he goes through, they didn't process the order right away. So we're a little behind there just in getting it, but they should be, I would think they'd be coming soon enough. Uh, the furniture upgrade, the new furniture has been ordered. We, we ordered, uh, eight new arm chairs and eight, uh, I, I think I may be wrong on this. But, uh, we ordered about, no, we ordered four new arm chairs and, and six new armrest chairs. We ordered 10 new chairs and then we're also gonna have some ch, chairs and ottomans reupholstered. I think I told you that last week when I had, or last month when I had you all stand up and look at. Yeah, they, we, yep, we got a couple of bids and we found somebody out of Sioux Falls. Uh, we won't be able to do it until January. And we're not getting as many pieces reupholstered as I hoped, but some of them, actually, we decided it may be best not to reupholster because they're really stained and we thought, okay, so if the, if the fabric is that stained, what does the cushion look like? And we finally have to replace the cushion too and then, and I was just go buy new chair. And I just, just about an hour before the meeting, got an email from, uh, the sales rep for the furniture and he said it should be arriving before the end of the month, I mean, about last week between Christmas and, depending on shipping and, um, you know, the whole pandemic and that, for the damper on things getting out as quickly. But it, it should be coming. Uh, so we should have that all in place. But the, the reupholster won't, reupholstery won't get accomplished until sometime in January. And then for the other technology, one thing we decided was to, instead of just using our five-year-old iPad, um, for recording our live streams, we purchased a GoPro video camera that we can, and we can actually connect it to a phone or to an iPad, you know, and, and use an app to control it, zoom in and out. So we can have a bit more higher production level of, so that's in place. And then that computer, we're going to upgrade with some memory and a, and a better video card so he can do some video editing. So, uh, we can just have a little more professional. The ones that, the videos that we pre-record and, um, upload for showing later instead of a live stream, we'll be able to do a bit more, um, higher production value. So that's what, where we are with that.
So any problem with, uh, the deadlines as far as when to spend that money and?
Um, the only potential problem is, uh, the upholstery, reupholstery and paying for that. I've got the, I had told the guy that I had to have the money spent by the end of the month, by the end of the year. He sent me an invoice and I received, I took it over to the finance office. Um, but Michelle Backfield told me that we can't pay this until the work's actually done. So I, uh, told her I'll email the, the rep at the humanities council and see if that'll be okay. So. But I don't, there won't be a problem. And it, and if I'm told that we have to spend the money, you know, get it paid out, um, I'll work with Michelle on that.
Okay. Okay.
Um. And then.
So there's really no action required on any of that?
Nope, that was an update.
Okay.
So if you want, I can go to, um. Zach, uh, is putting together a couple of different programming ideas starting in January. And he is here to explain it.
Okay, so I have a couple bingo cards out and you guys can pass those around. Um, starting in January, what I would love to do is get us started in the new year with a reading challenge. Uh, the winter reading challenge is designed to be more about helping people expand their, um, reading horizon. So there are challenges on there that include, um, reading a Western, reading a horror novel. And part of that is going through January 1st to the end of winter, which is March 20th. And, um, at the end of it, I would love to treat people who at least get at least five of those items done, including a free space, um, to prizes from local businesses. So there's a request for $150 to provide a couple prizes for winners um, with some goodies from local businesses to help support them. Cause I know that the pandemic has been really hard on them as much as it has been on everyone else. So I think if we can give back to them while also giving some, some of our readers some great goodies, that would be awesome. And, um, this, the, the other part of it too, and I don't know if Kevin gave you this one. Starting in January, I'm also planning to start a technology class series. Um, initially, it will be done through our live stream on Facebook. And I'm just, today started some test runs through our Facebook website to see how that would work out. There are a few things that I have to iron out, but, um, that, when we do start programming in person again, I'll start doing those classes at the library and having people come in and actually being a little bit more hands-on with that. Um, initially, the technology series is gonna start out with just operating systems, Windows 10, Mac OS, helping people work with those and get the basics on that. And then we're gonna move into Microsoft Office and kind of start with basics and increase, um, the difficulty of that. People will have the option to produce some deliverables that, um, I can look over and help people learn from, figure out what they can improve or even how they can work through like an Excel document or a Word document in a little bit more effective manner and help them out with that. So. Any questions? Oh, yes, Read Squared. Um, last year, the state library bought a, an online platform for summer reading program to help people track, um, their reading habits online. So instead of pending out paper, um, paper trackers, they have the option to also track their reading on like their phone, laptop or their desktop. Super easy use. You just sign up for an account, login, register for the program that you want and then you can start tracking. Um, so for like the summer coming up with our summer reading program, um, the state library should continue paying for it through a different fund than the CARES Act funding. I'm going to be using that and having people track pages, however many pages they read, and then setting up a store for, um, however many points they get. So it'll be like a page is a point. So if you read, read a 500-page book, you're gonna get 500 points. Um, with Read Squared, you can actually create bingo cards. So you can pretty much do the same thing with logging your reading, except you just go in, click, oh, I did, um, what's one of them? I think one of the squares is read a fanfiction. I did that one. You click it off and it's checked off. And you get a bingo. We get a notification on our, our end that you won a prize or won an entry for a drawing and we can get that done for you. I'm working on that. I, I have, I have lists started. Um, and actually in Read Squared itself, you can set up reading lists to help people find those materials at the library. So that is, that is the next step. I wanted to get you guys some bingo cards so that you could see that it is kind of moving at a steady pace. Um, but those reading lists are the next thing on my project to get done. So. Yep, Read Squared is actually connected to our library catalog. So you can actually create reading lists that reflect what we have in the collection right now, um, which is super awesome because I don't have to continually go back and forth between our catalog and then set it up in the program. So, yep. I'm gonna start out with general stuff right away. Um, depending on how quickly people move through it, cause I'm gonna kind of track that as well. Then I might move to doing some bigger projects or maybe even kind of a capstone in a way with like Microsoft Word of being like a, create a resume or with Excel creating a personal budget, something like that. That is something I'll be looking at, um, depending on when our policies change for COVID. Yeah. I'm, right now, I'm planning for all of our programming to be online through the end of summer, just as a precaution. Um, if something changes between now and then, I'm working on backups. I will always have a plan B or C for something. So.
Would you repeat that, what the motion was?
Um, Diane moved to, uh, actually increase the amount, Zach was requesting 150 and she moved to provide $200 in funding for prizes.
Okay. Okay.
And, and Emma.
Any other discussion? Okay, so all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
And updated circulation policy?
Um, yes. I have passed out, um, we drafted, we worked together as a staff to update our circulation policy. Uh, what was previously published on our website was basically just the last, um, two-thirds of the last page of circulation period and a few kind of policies, but it wasn't really spelled out in a narrative. And, uh, I wanted to be more complete. And so I looked at, you know, other libraries in the state, here in Brookings, Yankton, Vermillion. And, um, kind of used Brookings as, as my main model, but, um, I mean, these are our policies, just the format. Uh, the, and everything is pretty much standard, but starting on the second page, uh, you see there's an overdue material option one, damaged materials option one, and lost materials option one. And then on third page, there's an overdue materials option two, damaged materials option two, and lost materials option two. And I wanted to present two different options for those, uh, for the, the board to consider and, uh, approve, select and approve one of them. The difference between the two is charging that $5 processing fee that I think, you know, you all are aware of, um, previously, you know. Overdue fines were eliminated, um, and if I, if it were my preference, I would go with option two and eliminate the five dollar processing fee. If we're going to eliminate fines and we want to, um, kind of help support the people who struggle with paying the fines, eliminating that processing fee, would help there. And one other thing, just I wanna, I wanna make you all aware, in both of them, the language we used was to, uh, charge the library's replacement cost, uh, which is different from what has been done in the past. In the past, we were charging for lost books, damaged books, we were charging list price. And, uh, as Denny will tell you, no library pays list price. You know, we typically get our books at forty percent off. I mean, most, a lot of books, we get a forty percent off. Uh.
So would that be a reduction to the?
It would, yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, if it's a twenty, if, if it says twenty dollars, you know, on the book, list price, you know, we're getting it at. Right, and, you know, that's our cost. Uh, so even if we went with option one and maintained the five dollar processing fee, it would be still cheaper for our patrons because, uh, you know, they, unless it's, unless it's, uh, ten dollar paperback, um, that's the only way we can get it, you know, and forty percent, it would be, um, you know, six dollars. And if they pay the five dollars, it'd be eleven dollars. That would be about the only time that charging our replacement cost plus the five dollars would be more expensive than, than, you know, charging the only list, or, um, list price. So. And then one other thing that the, the library staff wanted to, um, have you consider the last sentence of option one for lost materials, and it would also be in, uh, in option two. And I'm not sure how many of you would, would know this, Denny, maybe you, Ann, maybe you, Steve, maybe, uh, at some point, uh, I guess, I was told the board decided to not refund. If somebody lost a book and then they paid for it, and then a few months, a month later found the book and brought it back, the library, I guess, used to refund that money and take the book back. And then the board at some point voted to not, I mean, to overturn that procedure. And, um, if we're recommending in order to create some goodwill, if somebody, I mean, have, have a cutoff of two months, but if they find it within two months of paying the fee, the, the replacement fee of the book, that we would, we, we would refund that replacement fee if the book is still in good condition, you know, circulating condition. Um, well, I, I have found that it doesn't seem like a lot of books get replaced. Um, you know, if they were lost, the money goes into, you know, the, the fee account, but it wasn't always spent on buying replacement books done. So the, the, if it was an older book, if it was, if it was a popular book, it's new, then it was replaced. You know, but typically, then it would be ordered through the library budget in the city, and so the money is still within the, the custody account. So. So I offer that to you for debate, discussion, input, wisdom.
What if the two months, like, have lost it before? Yeah, I feel like that two months, you know, was to prevent, you know, like, the end of the school year. Oh my gosh, I finally cleaned my kid's room and here's that book. And now it's been, you know, six or eight months later. I think it was, it just kind of keeps the, keeps the bookkeeping a little bit more sane. Is, is that, that's what my memory serves. That, and two months seems reasonable to me. Um, am I remembering that right, Steve?
I.
See. I think our current. Oh, well, that's what I've been told, is that the board voted to do away with refunding any patrons who, um.
I feel like it was simply a bookkeeping, you know?
I mean, and. Yeah. Well, and, and just the. Um, and again, and what is, uh, new popular title, you know, it probably isn't going to be replaced because it's, uh, or we may, we probably would wait the two months to, to replace it. Because if it's not, I mean, we can always get it into lib alone if we need to, if somebody wants to read it. But, um, you know, if it's not currently popular, we can use space on ourselves for new, new, um, materials. And the other thing I'll just point out, uh, you know, we don't accept replacement copies purchased by the patron. Uh, this is the reason for that. If somebody checked out a hardcover book and then they lost it and go, oh, I'll just go buy, you know, the paperback. Well, the paperback version, it may be texturally the same, but qualitatively, it's not the same. I mean, the hardcover books last longer, you know, they, they have a better binding. And, um, you know, we, if we're gonna replace it, we're going to purchase a new hardcover to circulate. And that's what we prefer for. It just lasts longer. Yes, for option two, yeah.
Is that the only difference between option one and option two?
Yes. Yeah, and so any, any language in option one that refers to the five dollar processing fee, that was removed and I, you know, worded it to make sense without review.
As far as the, like, the overdue notices and all of that, you're all good with the way that it's worded?
Yeah, they still will, they still will be, will be sent out. I mean, there'll be a difference because the way we do it now, week four, they, they would get an overdue notice that gives them the replacement, I mean, right now, the list price of the book, but it'd be the replacement fee. Uh, that kind of is a slap in the face to them to say, hey, this is how much this book costs if you don't return it. And if they still don't return it, then in week five, that five dollar, the, um, fee is added on. Uh, and that would just go away, then they would still get the, the, the notice in week four that, hey, this is the cost of the book. And then if, if, just a couple of the ex- points of explanation for lost materials. Uh, if somebody comes in and confirms that they lost it, or if they come early, even before week four, and tell us that they lost it and make arrangements to pay, they don't lose their circulation privileges because we're, we're going to reward them, uh, you know, for their honesty, and we'll work with them. If somebody, if we send out a notice, you know, and it's lost and then they come in and confirm, oh, I guess, you know, it is lost, I can't find it, and I set up a re- uh, repayment fee. I mean, if, if they can't afford to pay the twenty dollars or eighteen ninety-nine for the replacement cost, you know, we'll even work with them to do, okay, pay five dollars a month for the four months, and you'll pay it off, and we'll still check out materials for them. If that's one thing I didn't check. I didn't look to see, but do you know?
There's six months after we got that, the, um, or you look at it. It wasn't, uh, at least, that was recorded.
Yeah. No.
It appears it wasn't acting as a deterrent or, or, oh, I gotta remember to bring it back. Appears like, whatever, lengthy or whatever. Wasn't really a, there wasn't a cause of theft, maybe when there was, was the, um, before the end. Like, said, we, six years, we certainly were able to. That had a lot of, so, um, I would have an idea of the last, um, COVID year, who knows?
Yeah. Did, do you know off the top of your head, Zach, of, if, in the last year, we've seen an increase in number of overdues?
I tend to see, uh, when we, we do overdue policy, um, it, I can not really. As an industry, there have been more those returns because we've given people that way. Um, as you can see, that young, that's, really, when you ask, however much you did, um, like, we get prices paid on it. You know, if you want to take a quarter of it, um, and that, that's weird. I, I don't, I don't have enough information to answer that.
But if you were asking how much revenue did we lose, or, I mean, give out, I, I can go back and look in some spreadsheets to see previous years when that was being recorded for fines, how much, but, um. Well, yeah, that's what it's been this year, and, you know, it may be varies, but it's not been a, a great amount. So, again, I think, uh.
Excuse me, I'm also, I mean, I got a couple, uh, in reading, and if the content handler has expected replacement, um, except for replacement from the first time taken, and your example of them trying to replace a paperback book for a hardcover, that's not a replacement. That's, the replacement is, if I have a hardcover book, I gotta replace it with a hardcover book. And I guess I don't say, say anything with that, but you have to make sure that, that's understand that. But from what you're saying is, it's probably cheaper for them to pay us or the library if it truly is gonna be replaced, uh, forty to sixty percent discount than it is. So they could go out to the bookstore or online and buy it and give it back to the library. But, comedian, if, if they did that, great, I would accept it. But I'm not gonna accept the paperback or hardcover, and I'm not gonna accept the hardcover or paperback. And I'm not gonna accept the.
Well, I, I.
It's, the, the, in two thousand and ten, the previous one was printed in two thousand and eight. So I'm not gonna, I, I have to accept the exact replacement.
Well, and, and that's kind of a, that's a better, uh, example, or a more complete example of why we do that. I mean, there could be so many different additions than, you know.
Correct.
One could, and, and not every patron is gonna realize, they just think, and so it's just, I think, easier, easier to say.
We're going to replace it, so.
Yeah, because.
Right.
You know, or, or if, if a particular translation by, you know, this translator is the preferred edition, and they go out and buy one that, you know, a lesser quality translation, you know, we don't.
Uh, the other comment that's reading, and I think, um, first thing by network, and, and the sentence, the, certain patron groups are limited in the number of items they may check out at any one time. It seems we're putting statements out there, and then nowhere in the circulation policy does it talk about what patron group are limited and what items are limited and the number of items are limited.
Where is that statement?
Um, circulation policy, the last.
Oh.
So what groups are limited and why are they limited? And what are they limited to? And how many are they limited to check out? And nowhere in a circulation policy does it address any of that. Is the sentence even needed?
That's a question. I know we had a discussion about this.
Can you come up and read this and take?
If anything, you said the word first now, say, please, so what would be the number one?
Like, yeah.
I, but is that?
I don't even.
The bigger question is, is that appropriate in our circulation policy? And if it is, then we need to talk about the patron groups and what the limits are.
Um, I can give you one example. Uh, anyone under eighteen is not allowed to check out movies. Um, you know, so that's one example, and so, and that.
On the last page, yeah.
That, yeah, and we do state that on the last page, that movies are limited to five titles per card holder, only adults can check out movies.
How, how do I know that that relates to this?
Well.
And our other.
And, and maybe that sentence would maybe be better to go, like, during the, right under circulation periods and say, certain patron groups are limited in the number of items they may check, because then in here, we do have a few limitations.
It's just, it was hanging out there. Kind of, all by itself and at one rate or one minute, around it or whatever.
And would it make sense to put it up to zero now, three zero now, or it has three days to find?
Yeah. Let me, we will look at that, and let me talk to Zach about, is there a better way to word that? And a better location for it, and I'll, I'll let you know. Or, or if you just wanna approve it.
Approve it with a.
With, with, with the understanding that that will be amended, um, and either struck for relocated with some clarification.
We talked about, uh, kids, people under six, under eighteen, who can't check out movies? You know, that, that, that's written in the policy. Do we need that one? Do we need that one at all? I don't know unless we wanted to, the length to apply to other things that we have in place.
Yeah, can you think of other limitations?
Can you look up your circulation, if you kind of refer back to that page?
I mean, it, I, it, it.
No limitation when I do, like, what?
Yeah, I.
I think you just write that one.
Yeah.
You want to, except for circulation policy, but be a full, uh, family? Option two.
I would be okay. Okay, so let, wait, let me.
But the option without the five dollar fee, is that what, what?
Yes, so the, the mo- Yes. So the, the motion is, um, select option two, and I'll, I'll reword this, option two. And strike last line, page one. Last sentence, page one. Um, and that was programmer, review seconded. Okay, so the motion was to, uh, approve the policy, uh, with, with the option two for damaged materials, uh, overdue materials, and lost materials. And then strike the last sentence of page one.
All right, um, so we have the discussion, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? All right, so we're good on that.
And then, so, you think the first of that line was kind of covering up the circulation period?
I do.
And that all lines together?
Yeah, I think it was, it would be.
You know, one week, these are two weeks.
Yeah, but sorry, in the, sorry, you're situated in the policy.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we don't have any, are we done with that, then?
Yep.
Initially, there's a line that says exceptions to the policy to be made if the director of the library director, the director's designated, but there's still latitude.
Right, so it's still, uh.
Okay. So we're good. Um, any committee report? Any board input?
I was just asking, Kevin, when I first got here, what the difference was between what this board is supposed to do, and what the city is supposed to do? Like, how many boxes does he have? Like, how many people does he report to? I'm just wondering if there's a chart anywhere that had, like, here's what the city is responsible for, and here's what the board is responsible for, just so that, I don't know, as a new person, I just don't wanna be micromanaging.
And we just updated our organization chart with the, changing the public state, going away, and hiring, going, they play, so we can leave. I think we can request that from the city of here, for the library fifth. Um, and then, they, and we did this for the board previous, uh, we had Justin Johnson come in, attorney, and talk about the, the legal separation of the board of trustees, um, versus what the city's responsible for, and how that goes back, actually, we had Jim Taylor, who used to be a member of the board, and, you know, that, that's due, that there's legal precedents that are set, uh, as to what the trustees can do versus what the city, they were able to, or can't do. Uh, and I, I cannot articulate it in a way that we used to.
Then they can provide us a handout, if it's table or chart.
In something, I, I will send out the email, the state library has resources about rules of library boards. So I will, um, copy those off and send them out, or send you the link to those sites, so that you can review them.
That would be helpful. Hey, so I just felt bad for coming in, we're having, like, how many boxes do you have?
Well, we, we, we hire and fire. And the city doesn't.
They have the library board money that the city can't touch.
Yep, and the, the other part of that is the city can't oblige the library without one of the people.
Oh, yeah.
But the city can say, great, you have the library, it's, it's sitting there, everything else, and we're only gonna give you fifty thousand dollars. Trustees will figure out how much support we can give for fifty thousand dollars, and we, there's no recourse, we have on that at all. Uh, other than, now, the trustees, we also can raise and control our own money. And that's why we have our own bank account, and that's why we have the friends of the library that could go out and do millions of dollars in the under. And that's, that's the friends of the library, they could give to us for management, and we could do with what we wish, and the city can't say anything about it.
And so, the code of codified law allows for library districts to be formed that can pass as well. I mean, so the board would then, you know, if, if a vote was, was done by, you know, and went through, and the board could pass. Yeah, I don't, that's not gonna happen. You know, I don't, I don't know if any library.
But there is an example of, of a friend, library friend, raising billions of dollars in the under east. And they did, and they spent billions of private money, a lot of public money, to use their library.
I agree with that.
Uh, no, before you came, I, I gave a little update on that, uh, no, that's quite all, uh. Finally, last week, I remembered that, oh, I had some tasks to do. Um, so I emailed Sheila, and I'm still waiting to hear, uh, a reply from her regarding when they meet, and, uh, if I could attend and coordinate, but I don't think anything's that wrong.
My primary question was just the, the financial report with all those numbers on it, I just was thinking, in the middle of the night, when I said, doesn't the city oversee that budget? Not, not really any of them. Somebody else signs off on those, right? Like, the library account, yes, that's ours a hundred percent. I was unsure as to why we were reviewing this whole entire budget, when it really wasn't something that we controlled. That was my only question.
And, and Dana asked me that question before everybody else, and I said, I, I equate it to a school district, where there's a school board that oversees the school, and hires the superintendent to run the school, and that policy, meaning you all are, are responsible for setting policies at the library, uh, so I see a lot of parallels, um, between school boards and, and library boards, of, and the role that, you know. And since you've been on both, Steve, I know you've got a good analogy.
Yeah, yeah. We, I think we have to look at, the city gave us, extra dollars, dollars, to spend, and spending it in the most effective way that, that, that's supposed to, the city, we need to try and decide what's most effective way. City, I think, disagreed with that, they would disagree by helping the robbery, the amount of money, or asking them to help with that.
And you and Emma were not on the board, I mean, I worked here either, but weren't on the board when the budget requests for twenty twenty-one were developed and submitted. So you didn't have any input on, I mean, I don't know if any of you did. But, um, you know, but I, I would certainly, to go along with that, say that next spring, those would be things, do we want to, since, because I can even see, you know, we've had in capital outlay, you know, a fair amount of money for buying physical audiobooks, and I am leaning much more towards the audiobooks and overdrive, that people can check out and use this, rather than having a CD. But I also, I mean, I have the discussion with that, and with some of our part-time staff, of, well, there are people who maybe don't have the ability, they could listen through their phone, but if they don't have a Bluetooth speaker at home, or, you know, they can't connect, you know, they don't have a car that has Bluetooth capabilities, um, having a CD may fit their needs in circumstances better, so, but, you know, those would be some discussions of, would it be better to shift money from capital outlay for the physical items to operating, you know, for purchasing the digital item?
Because that's where I think, in interviews, with that, talking about, if you run into technical things, um, where people say, well, boy, how do I do that? Then we have a platform to, here's how to put the app on your phone, it doesn't cost you money, okay, I don't need that. And let's all put a, a book on there, and, um.
Yeah.
And, yep, so we have this, at the beginning, books, we systematically train, and then three years from now, it all changes again, and you gotta train them all again.
Well, yeah.
But.
Got it, question.
How about that? Yeah, I, I do, I was lucky for that, but I'm excited, and finally, we can tell the people to know when they're there, we can tell the city, we got this many people visiting here, we either have enough money, or don't have enough money, or we want the money to be spent this way, or we wanna take salaries and put it here, or take some other thing and put it there, because this is the demographic of who and when we're serving. And we've never been able to articulate that to the people, so help God, and roll in, and we have lots of people, we're gonna help this, and that, or, or social.
Well, and I just, as an example of that, I don't know why, but on Friday afternoon, I got an email from Stephanie at one, asking me, you know, what was the traffic in the library for the last year? And I had to send back to him, say, well, I don't really know, but here is the number that Jackie included in the twenty nineteen, for the twenty nineteen report to the, to the state library, you know, which is, I'm not sure how it was. I, I don't know that I'm necessarily looking forward to, um, doing my first report this first year, when we don't have all of those numbers. Next year will be much easier.
We can say online, participation has gone up ten thousand.
Yeah. Yeah.
Very numbers.
Yeah.
And I keep a lot of those, those kinds of numbers, you know, I, no.
Yeah.
There was the push to get people to participate online, probably, but I think you'll keep a lot of them, even if it's in person.
Yeah. And, and even if we do it in person, we know that we will be, we, we'll, we'll either record it and put it online, or we'll livestream it, you know, uh, either we'll do one of those two things, but that we'll make it available, so more people can participate, one way or the other.
I, I don't know, that's something, because, uh, I know what I don't want to have on the board, but I'll do that. Um, do you have, it was possible to use that, that, going to the media, you know, this is what they're trying to do here, and all this, and, and.
Oh, okay.
I didn't catch all of that, you froze for a second, you did. Um, Emma wants some projects?
Well, I said, just like.
For an idea what projects are.
What, each, the different parts of life, and what everybody's, you know, all of these things, and I'm doing great, seeing what you're doing, and, and, you know, we, we keep you here a lot, but, you know, as a, as a new coordinator, but I don't think we have a different, you know, that will happen for the whole year, for the whole life.
Yeah. Well, and.
And I think I probably can help as well, if you know, like, yeah.
And I, I ended purposely in my report, you know, just then focused on adult services, because, you know, we had talked about children's programming last month or the month before, and so I wanted to also kind of highlight that, look, we just started last month, and, um, just the things that, that we have planned, so, but we can come up with a, mapping out twenty twenty-one, as best we can, with, with, with options A, B, C, and. I'm sorry, Dana? Oh, it, it was, the reports we got back were, were very family, families enjoyed it, um, the businesses, I think, enjoyed participating, um, so.
Is there any way that we could tie a report to the end of the project that we fund? Like, as an example, we funded that project, the library board did, is there any way that we could get a report then at the end, to talk about all the methods that we gathered?
Okay, I mean, on, on that particular one, we didn't necessarily, you know, get a lot, yeah.
Anecdotally, something we heard.
Yeah.
Even that would be something that's sort of heard.
Okay.
It would be interesting. And like with that program, how many people played bingo, how many prizes did you give out, you know? Because with that, when you said you have up to this much money, did you spend all of that money, did you not spend all of that? You know, what, what was the, how did it turn out? Yeah, how did it turn out? So I'm curious, how did it turn out? You know, did, again, more justification for budget?
Yep, yeah, or, or increased program, or.
Right, increased libraries, more programming, because there's so much.
I have to get it from first to fifth, this time, if you want to go from fifth to ninth, 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 eleven.
Or more businesses want to participate.
Right.
Or, you know, more books, or more age levels, or, so maybe there needs to be an adult romance novel, people throughout, right, like the quilt thing. You know, I, I don't know, okay, ideally, sorry, but I just think a report would be fun to have at the end.
Okay, thank you. No, I, I mean, I, I, I mean, I thank you for, this thing that also helps me say, all right, this is what I need to do to prepare for this meeting, too, so that I'm not just, oh, well, we'll talk about.
Anyone have anything else? Uh, we do need to set the next meeting, January nineteenth at five P M, council chamber. And, um, anything else? If not, uh, we need new attorneys. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Kevin, if you will email Danny and I what we need to do for you.
Okay.
And then Danny, when we get that, maybe we can talk or email tomorrow and come up with something.
Okay, I think I sent you an email and my phone number, you should have it hopefully.
Danny sent you an email and his phone number, so.
Okay.
All right.
Our email.
I will go stop.
Okay, I got it, Danny, so that sounds good, thank you.